Functions are, you know, after all the staff computing, like the public stuff was farmed out to someone and other, that's part of their, part of their remit. As part of this kind of upgrade, we had to replace two aging printers. Those two printers have been received and have been set up and are now in place for both use by the public as well as staff.
One of them is in the, across from the circ desk and the others in the workroom?
Correct. Yeah, they're the same printer. So hopefully they're good durable machines.
Did you say this? No, I just didn't hear it. Are they available to the public if people are using computers that can?
Yes, so we, one of them replaces the existing public printer that's connected to both, that's connected to all of the public computers. But members of the public can, there are public methods to send emails from, or send print jobs from devices to that. I'm hoping that one of the printers that we took out of use will be able to continue using that as a second printer that'll be dedicated to just wireless jobs. So one will be for, you know, just the wired computers that are here and then one will be for, because it, it doesn't really work very well to go back and forth between those two things.
Yes.
So we're gonna try to have one that's dedicated for that purpose, but it needs some, it needed a new drum to, because it was printing weird. So hopefully that will be in place shortly if I can bring it back to life. And then the only thing that really, that I, oh, and I should mention that as a personal matter that Audra stood, give her formal resignation from the YA position she is staying on as a Saturday staff person. So that allows us to advertise the YA position as just a Monday through Friday position, which is what we would prefer anyway, so that, you know, that person is here during after-school hours. There's no benefit to having a YA person on Saturday because there are teenagers here. But that was just something that we had to do when we had less resources to deal with staffing. And then the only thing that I am looking for action from the trustees this month is the proposal from Thayer Street, Thayer Street Studios for the reuse of the brackets that were on Hoover School, if you all recall, we had the, you know, the heavy, I don't remember if it was our iron brackets that came off of the old building. And they have been reimagined at, I don't know if you can see that, for use on the other end of the building, under the tall windows facing that way. So it'd be like a little potty bench that could be used for outdoor programming, so putting, you know, seats and pots and messy stuff, crafts, activities, that kind of thing. So the proposal to, to build that bench and to install, install it, you know, fix it to the wall is $1,480 total.
I make a motion to spend the money, the 1,480, on the installation and the custom planting too.
Second.
Two questions. What is the source of funds gonna be? And is it also imagined to be used sort of like as a table if there is a program and there are snacks or beverages or something, or?
Any, it could be used for any purpose. The only purpose we don't want to use for is people sitting on it. But aside from that, it can be used for any purpose. It's like, it'll be made of durable weather, you know, weather resistant wood.
Yeah, fancy wood.
Yeah. As far as the source of funding, I would, I would, I would probably pay for this out of remaining construction funds unless there's a complete reason to use the bank for it.
All in favor? Yes, thank you.
Great. And that is more or less it. The community foundation balances keep bouncing back and forth, up and down, pretty dramatically by, you know, tens of thousands of dollars from month to month. It's exciting to watch their back up relative to where they were last month. Donor wall, there's no update, there's no major update. I did finally touch base with Dan, the guy that's fabricating that donor recognition wall, and he says he is working on it. He is kind of a one-man shop. He's in the middle of a renovation moving project or something like that. So he said he's, he's underway with it and that he would give me an update soon. So I will touch base with him, you know, in the coming month and hopefully have more of a solid ETA for when that will be installed.
When will that be installed?
Where?
Where?
In, on the wall, outside of the small meeting room in the lobby.
Oh, okay. As you go, and the door's on the left-hand side?
Exactly.
Okay. Do you wanna talk about any other building issues?
I didn't print out the agenda, but I assume, is that, is that an item?
Oh, just the library building, because like we could do multiple.
Yeah, so the, the updates from the last meeting on the building are that Lynn and I met with Carolyn Garyburg, the building maintenance person, and
Tommy.
And, oh, and Tom Quinn, then the building inspector.
And Jim was there.
And yeah, Jim from the select board office was there as well. And so we discussed the current situation with the roof warranty being rejected and the state of the roof. Because in the meantime, when we got the news that the, that the warranty claim had been rejected, I got back in touch with Phil and Mark and said, well, what are the possible solutions here? Based on what we understood that the roof was, you know, more or less okay to proceed. It was disputed whether, you know, what the cause of any wear on the roof was and what we could do to, you know, remediate going forward that, that vulnerability. And so they gave us a couple of ideas. And then we went to the meeting to discuss this further with Carolyn and the others. And we got some pushback. We got some kind of, a sense that, in their opinion, in their professional opinions, that the roof is, is more of a problem than just the, the areas of wear. They see, you know, plow, moisture potentially infiltrating the under, you know, the under layers of plywood and possibly making that wood bow. So they think that it's a bigger issue. Again, I'm just taking their word for it because I cannot, can't see with my own eyes, but that's what they say. And so Carolyn said that at that point, we would, the town would probably need to seek guidance from town council to see how to proceed about this. And that's where we've left it. I don't have any, can you figure out anything that I'm leaving out?
No.
So then that means they're thinking about legal action against?
They're looking for legal advice to see if, if it would be advisable to try and
recover funds.
Right. The difficulty here, and Carolyn has sort of said this, but the difficulty here is that it's really hard to know where the fault lies, whether it's, you know, poor oversight, poor design, poor installation, you know, we don't, we don't know. And everyone is going to say it's that guy's fault. So it may be that it just makes more sense rather than trying unsuccessfully to go after a culprit, that we just figure out what the solution is and then aim towards, you know, attain that.
So we first.
Right, so there, she's in touch with the town council and will maybe know soon how they'd like to proceed. But apparently it is more of an issue than just reinforcing the roof. And I have to take their word for it, but they know what they're talking about.
So is it possible moving forward to change what is on the roof right now from like asphalt to?
Anything's possible, you know, it's a matter of money. Right, I mean, it's, it could be, you know, the question is, does the whole, is the whole thing faulty and it needs to be addressed, or is it just that certain areas need to be reinforced? I don't know. It's just, I don't know enough about it personally. I just have to listen to what they tell us and act accordingly.
Yeah.
The other issue that I tried to bring up going into this is that our lead, there is, there are clocks ticking on our application for lead. And we kinda need to figure this out sooner or later, sooner than later. Because it is, it is not an just open-ended thing that we can apply this money. It's not an open-ended thing that we'll receive the incentive grant from the MBLC for getting the certification. So we're already pretty close to the line as far as the certification goes, because it goes by points. And from what I'm told by the person that deals with lead in Phil's office, we're kinda close to the line. So any points that we can get would be very helpful. There are things that we could potentially do, but unfortunately, most of them are not just simple, you know, wave a magic wand and get points. They're, you know, they're like putting solar on the roof. They are having the car charger installed outside, which is doable, but it's, you know, substantial amount of work that, and it probably, again, if we were thinking intelligently about this, we would probably be looking at it on a town-wide scale as part of like a larger plan, not just the library. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know if it works on our timeframe, but that's something else that we could do. So yeah, so this is, we're a little bit compromised by the circumstances as far as, as far as lead goes, but I'm trying to keep up with it and get the things done that we can do, like getting our utilities. Our utilities are supposed to be reporting to Energy Star, which is the, you know, the national database for energy consumption and energy, you know, conservation, which has been challenging to do. It's very complicated to get the thing set up, so I'm working on that. And then the other thing that came up with the building is that while I was away on vacation, Lynn sent me a photograph of the sidewalk. There are some portions of the sidewalk where the top layer is kind of disintegrating. It's like really in bad shape. So I sent that over to the DPW folks and said, can we, you know, meet and look and figure out what to do about this and what the problem is? Because they do, they are putting out a lot of chemical salt stuff.
I saw, whatever form.
Yeah, and so I did, I also did touch base with Haley at the Council on Aging just to see like, are you having problems on your side of the site with this? Because it wasn't the same contractor that did the sidewalks on both sides. So it seemed like if they were having problems over there, then it seems like something other than defective concrete or workmanship. They have had some issues over there, but not to the same extent that we have.
It's minor.
Now, is this a new instance of this? Because I know that there have been, we've had issues.
We did, we had a little bit, and I think, if I recall.
I thought that was corrected, or?
Yeah, see, the way I remember it, and I could be wrong about this, is that when we had the initial instance of this, that it may have been still under warranty.
Okay.
Do you, is that how you recall it?
That I don't know about. But after having registered some scaling or blistering, take your pick, of formal cement term, they decided to do that sealant application.
That's right.
And they did that Labor Day weekend, if I recall.
Was that over the entire concrete?
Right, that was, that was.
Both sides, their COA has.
Um, I, where the scaling is taking place, and it's mostly from just beyond the restrooms toward the back and around, it's not prevalent there, it's not out along the street.
Which could be indicative of the fact that they don't salt that as heavily as they salt the sidewalks coming up to the door. Don't know, it's hard to say.
I will point out that the senior center looked like a beach of salt. It was kind of alarming, actually. But it's, it is one area, it is not all of it. And so Patrick is working on trying to figure out when the concrete was actually put down and if the appropriate tests were done and so on and so forth. And that's, that meeting was just this afternoon and that's still sort of in process.
Yeah, so we did, we met with Carolyn and the DPW folks and looked at it. You know, they gave us their impression of what was going on with it. They seemed to think it was, you know, the work was not properly done. There was something wrong with either the conditions when this, the cement, that it was not a favorable time when it was put down, or something was not putting the concrete that should have been. So following that, I wrote to Phil and to Mark and, you know, explained the situation, sent them the pictures and asked the questions raised by Gary and
Scott.
And Scott from DPW about what had been in the formulation of the concrete and what had not been. Because they were saying it should have been that there was, you know, anti, I actually had to call Scott and ask him. Like, I can't remember the term that he used, but, but something that would, that would not allow caustic substances to, you know, to harm the, harm the concrete. And also was the concrete surface sealed? So I asked for that and I asked for, you know, were all of the tests that needed to be done followed? Were there any irregularities in the test results that were, that were done at the time that the concrete was put down? And so Phil, I'm trying to remember if he actually sent me the test results or he was gonna look into that. I, I don't remember, but he, they, he did reply, both Mark and Phil replied immediately, which was very helpful. And they said that from what they saw, they both agreed that, to their mind, it was salt damage. They did say, for whatever reason, that they did not, in the specification, recommend using the things that Scott and Gary had called for. Now, I don't know why there's that discrepancy, why in their professional judgment, it's not what the DPW guys think, but it's not really clear what it should have been. I don't know who to believe on that. So, so again, we're, we're working through that.
Don't they use like a sand and salt mixture?
No sand, there's no sand mixed in it.
They used to use a lot more sand. I don't know why they've switched, but now they just use that, you know, big rock salt kinda stuff and it, it's just, you know, it's everywhere, it's just a lot of it. So they, it, it looks like, you know, and we asked the question, is this something that we need to address immediately? Is there an issue? Is there a safety issue? Are people gonna start tripping on it? What are we obligated to do? And they didn't think that this was something that we needed to address like right away. It could wait. It doesn't look good, but it's not, you know, it's not.
It's not a safety, health and safety issue.
Right, yeah. So we can leave it for now and sort of figure out what can be done. But they seem to think that, you know, at the time, when we do try to address it, that it probably makes sense to like break it up and just report from scratch. So it's.
That would probably be in the spring.
Well, it, it may not even be necessarily this year, but yeah, it would be when it's favorable to pour concrete. So it wouldn't be winter, it would be probably sometime in the summer.
Carolyn said that just being alerted to the fact that this may need to be considered in the course of the townwide budget, that there will not be an opportunity to do it in FY '24. So we are looking probably beyond that. And neither Scott nor Gary suggested that this was in any way something that needs to be addressed immediately.
Do we need to put a sign?
Again, it's not, it's not causing a hazard. If it was causing a hazard that required a sign, then we probably would need to do something about it. But right now it's just, you know, kind of patchy.
Like flaking.
Yeah, right. And so it needs to be tweaked off for sure, but it doesn't, it's not gonna make you trip.
One of the things that I think Gary pointed out is that where some of this blistering has taken place, you can see beneath it, there's a fairly large chunk of stone. So his theory, which kind of actually made a fair amount of sense to my way of thinking, was that they didn't allow the aggregate to settle enough so that, I mean, this is like chocolate chips in the scones or whatever. Are they evenly distributed, are they at the bottom? The big stones are supposed to be at the bottom and the finer stuff at the top. And if you have something hard at the top and just a very, very thin bit of concrete on top, it's easy to understand how that would become dislodged. It was actually fairly disheartening to hear, but.
And I guess that's it. I can't think of anything else building related for now.
That's pretty thick.
Well, yeah, the thought is occurred to me that the library director is spending more time being a facilities manager than a library director, which is problematic. Okay. Do the friends have anything to say?
They're meeting tomorrow night.
Um, our timing is always.
There wasn't any meeting last month, so they're meeting tomorrow night.
Would you do me a favor then? If there is anything that would be useful for the rest of us to know about, just send us a quick email rather than wait?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I actually only have one other thing that I sort of kind of previewed. And I did come over on Saturday when this very large event occurred and
What was that then?
It's like an anti-vaccine talk, wasn't it?
There were two guest speakers from a group that is not in favor of vaccines. And folks were behaved and there was, there were, there were no incidents, but it was very well attended and simply.
In this space?
Yes.
There were like a hundred people in this room?
More than a hundred, which was problematic because, as I've mentioned, all of the parking places, except for handicapped, were full. And there were patrons who were not able to find a parking place. And Patrick in talking to staff and having other conversations, it is clear that it would behoove us to take a closer look at the policy and particularly how that relates to what the capacity is. There's, several people have questions about the plaque of wherever it is that says.
It's outside the door on the left, or yeah, on the left when you go out. It says 250. It's basically, the capacity for this room is 250, which is, you could, right, exactly. If you, if you essentially be stuck a person, I, actually Luna came in here today and blessed her heart, paced off the, counted off the squares in the room, did the math, and it's like 200. So you could fit one person, to get 250, you would have to be more than one person, one person and a fraction.
More than a quarter. Well, some people could stand on other people's shoulders, right?
They could do that too, yeah, exactly.
I just can't even imagine a hundred people in here, let alone more than that.
That's the max. We've had, you know, we've had a couple of events, of events now where it's been around that and, you know, it, this raised a lot of questions, one of which, I mean, the first consideration here is that when you have any event, so the organizers, the organizers of the event kept coming in and sort of like pointing to the sign and saying, well, the capacity's 250, right? And we were like, no. I mean, no matter what that sign says, by policy, the room is only able to be used by a hundred people at a time.
Especially if there's chairs.
Well, that's, that's the kicker, because you can't, you could say, oh yeah, you could cram 250 people in here, but they are having a four-hour event or three-hour event. There's no way the three people are, that for three hours, people are going to stand. So of necessity, you have to have chairs. And once chairs are involved, they have to be laid out in an orderly fashion so people can go in and out of the room. And you cannot get more than, there's, this is, what did you just count, 98 chairs or something like that?
Well, including the wood ones.
Oh, including the wood, well, so whatever it is, like that, this is all the chairs. And if you lay them all out, there's no room for, I mean, you can have people standing, but they're blocking aisles. So it's really not.
So you would suggest in the future, maybe having people to enforce that?
We, now that we know what a, what a hundred-plus person meeting looks like, we need to kind of maybe review the meeting room policy and figure out what is a realistic number and also think about other considerations, like what does it mean when you have a hundred-person meeting for other library users? What does it mean for users of the Council on Aging or other neighboring departments? Because there's an impact on those departments. So if, if, we may need to look at the hours that this room can be occupied at maximum capacity, whatever that number is.
Right.
I had proposed to Lynn that we just have a little working group to think through some of these things. And one thing that I would suggest that we do is set up this room with all of the chairs and figure out what it, you know, how it can be laid out and figure out what the, the actual number should be. Because a hundred was a number that was thrown out by Phil as to what he thought would work with seating.
Doesn't the fire department need to weigh in on this?
Well, I need, I have to talk with them as well, because again, the number that's on the, on the room that says 250 is in, to my mind, in contradiction with the building permit, which the total occupancy of the whole, the whole building is 317.
This is like a little.
This is.
Maybe 250 is for the whole building?
That's what the building permit says.
No, that's 317.
The sign on that says occupancy is for this room. So it's not helpful to have a sign that says that, because people look at it and they just take it for granted that that's what it is. People that maybe don't have any sort of spatial sense, you know, could look at this room and go, well, it says 250. So we're gonna, we're gonna plan our, our event to have 250.
And especially given it, at the time, they're gonna want as many people in here as possible.
Right, and that's not in our best interest to have people jamming bodies in here for all kinds of reasons. The other thing that we need to take into account is that every meeting is unique. And so if people come in and say, so for instance, in this meeting, they had, you know, they had a table out in the hall, which I think we said that they could do, because again, I don't, we were worried about people coming in, but that, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't unreasonable to allow them to have a table with literature on it. We've done that for many other meetings and groups. But the practical consideration is that if you, once you start deploying tables in the space, that eats up even more space for chairs and occupants. So we kind of need to think about what it means to have a table in use, two tables, six tables in use, and then how that reduces the overall occupancy and make sure that people adhere to these numbers.
And you also have people congregating out there too.
Right, and that caused a problem, because people were just milling around in the lobby, apparently after, during, and so people that were here to just do their normal business were kind of like, and, and, you know, people that didn't really wanna walk through crowds of unmasked people, which is not really a, a problem that we don't have, there's no policy on masking in the building, so it's kind of like, there's not really much we can do about that. But egress is a concern. So if you have a bunch of people just milling around, you know, it needs to be clear to the organizers that they need to keep spaces free and not just let it spill over into other areas.
There are also issues to consider about the length of time something is booked, if there are recurring events, and certainly if there, I believe there were at least cookies or beverages involved with this, about custodial support, even if just in making sure the restrooms are clean. And there are, I mean, between things that Patrick thought up, things that staff members pointed out, what I observed, the conversation I had with Audra and Ella when I was here, it's not a real straightforward thing. And it sounds to me as though what we need is sort of kind of a sliding scale. And if it is going to involve custodial or other supervisory support, as someone pointed out, if the rec department holds something at the elementary school, they have to pay for a custodian to be on duty. So, excuse me, there are a lot of facets to this. And if there is anyone who is particularly interested, I would be happy to have them play a role in putting something together and have them play a role in putting something together and working with Patrick and the staff. And if not, then I will.
I think it's probably a couple of hours of just kind of thinking through scenarios and different, you know, situations and just reviewing the document, maybe going through and reviewing some other library meeting room policies again, um, which is what we did when we put the first one together. But, um, but now that we have more experience with it, I think, you know, other things will jump out of other policies that may be helpful to us. Uh, and then, you know, make a recommendation and bring it back to the full board for, for, uh, for an updated policy.
Is it only regarding this room or is it the other bookable room as well?
It probably should be.
Similar policies or completely separate?
The, the, both rooms are, are, at least the two rooms that are, um, bookable and theoretically available for after hours use when the building is all set up for that, those fall under the policy. Other rooms do not because they're more, you know.
Part of the library.
They're part of the library and it's kind of, sometimes it can be used as like overflow or whatever if it's appropriate. But that's kind of like more down to our discretion and they're not really reservable rooms unless we decide to put something in there. So it's mostly these two.
I'd be happy to help with that.
Thank you. Then I will leave that to you and Patrick to figure out when it's convenient to work on that.
Cause that's something that needs to happen soon. Like the update of the policy.
You know, you're right. So in order to update the policy, it would have to be read twice before it could be approved and go into effect. So that means a couple of months.
Is this particular group, do they meet more, is this a common meeting place for them?
So it's, I don't really know, well, it's unclear to me, um, who this group is and who the organizer, organizers are. There was a group that I believe came and used the room for purposes that they said was something about like sort of a legislative get together. I thought they, I thought the people that came, so about a month ago, it's happened before, um, you know, there was a group that got together before the holidays and they came in and they described the meeting as something like meeting with legislators. Um, and again, I didn't really think anything of it. I don't really know what the content of the meeting was and to be honest, I don't really care. It was just more a matter of, you know, facilitating the meeting, making sure that the A V stuff worked for them and then I got out of here. And so later in the month, um, someone, I think that was affiliated with that meeting called back and reserved the room. I think they spoke with another staff member to take the reservation. Subsequently, they called back and I spoke to them and the person was talking to me, this was weeks had gone by and the person was talking to me like as though they, I would know who they were and I didn't, I had no idea. I just took the reservation, I double checked the reservation, yep, you're on the book. Um, and they, they were asking very sort of intensive questions about the occupancy of the room. And I explained that the policy as it stands is a hundred people and I explained about the chairs and, and what have you. And they were like, okay, all right. So they seemed to be fine. Um, and then in the meantime, we found out, and, and it was, I guess the warning bells were going off because they were saying that they had, they were basically, um, had a waiting list and that, you know, they, they expected the room to be at capacity. So I was like, okay. And then we kind of looked into it more and then we realized that the, the content of the meeting was going to be controversial, which again is fine. However, we were concerned about having many, many people here, um, a controversial subject, people getting into arguments or whatever, um, counter protesting, what, what have you. And so, you know, I, I did alert the, um, cause it was happening on a Saturday, I alerted the, uh, the police department just so that they know that there might be something happening here and if the very least a vigil by, they'd know why there were a hundred cars in the parking lot. And so thankfully nothing happened, but I wanted the staff to feel reassured that if, like all hell was breaking loose, that if they picked up the phone, somebody was gonna come over here and, and take it upon themselves to deal with it because it's not the staff's problem to deal with, um, something like that. And so we got through it. Lynn was here, um, saw it with her own eyes that it was, uh, you know, way more, you know, packed in here than it, than it should be. Um, and so my plan, and so in answer to your question, that group wants to come back and use the room for other purposes. Now, I don't know if they're all thematically consistent with what they were doing, if they're, I, I just don't know enough about the organization to know what they want to do. And again, I don't really care as long as it's consistent with the policy.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I don't have contact information beyond just starting to reach out to random emails that I found on websites to try to find the organizers. So my plan is to wait for them to call back with other questions or other logistical.
Schedule for the first Saturday of February.
Exactly. So they, they had a reservation.
That is a local group. I believe the meeting that was here last Saturday was a regional group with two guests.
Right. It was coordinated by the local group that was affiliated.
But it was drawing from a wider area than might typically be the case. But that doesn't change the capacity of the room.
Right. My only concern is that going forward, that I get the message to these folks that the meeting that they held here was not in compliance with the policy as it's written. And so that, again, that's raised questions about how we handle reservations with, with groups that we're not familiar with, where we don't know, you know, because there are groups that come in here like all the time and it's, we're not going to go through a bunch of paperwork with people that come in and we know that there's like, oh, there's six and eight people or it's a writing group and they have like ten people max. They're just gonna make their reservation. We, there's no problem. But when there's an issue where it's like, well, we're, you know, just an unfamiliar entity and we don't know how to get in touch, uh, we want to make sure that they understand the policy, that they're, you know, that they're agreeing to the policy. We're probably gonna have to start doing a little more paperwork on, on that end. And that's in the policy. We just haven't been doing that because we haven't needed to. The, the meetings have been smaller by and large.
One of the things I'm wondering about, it, like whether this is in the policy already or how explicit it is, just about, I'm just imagining like if, if, if there's a table with literature, I'm wondering like how much of that is misinformation? And whether that is actually counter to the policy or whether there was, whether there was disturbance of, I mean, it sounds like there was like, people physically were having a hard time getting through just the crowd. I'm just wondering if there's anything in the policy about like leaving, leaving patrons alone or.
Well, they weren't soliciting, they weren't.
Not, not if they were doing it, but if there's anything in the policy that explicitly describes like needing to kind of keep your event sort of out of, out of the way of, of normal library use. Yeah.
I, I don't know if there's specific language to that, but definitely we need to insert it if it isn't there, just to make sure that it, this is not, that anything happening in here is not disruptive to the normal use of the library by, library patrons. So.
That's what I was wondering, if they're gonna have, uh, display tables, that they have to be fitted into the meeting room and not, and just stop everyone from using the lobby area for a meeting display table.
Right. So yeah, I guess the things that come to my mind that we, that we would then need to address it, that means like we would then tell the friends, the friends cannot sell popcorn. Or do we, again, is this by, by discretion to, on a case by case basis?
Friends of the library where this is a public meeting room.
But they probably, people wouldn't necessarily know that. I mean, cause do, do the friends advertise or have like a sign that says?
Yeah, they do. They advertise as the friends.
They probably don't.
That, that does what?
That says they're, they're the friends of the library.
I, I guess I'm, what I'm wary of, and I am always wary of this, is having double standards that someone points at and says, but you let so and so do this.
And they would definitely, probably not case of the place, but you know, find out if other groups are.
But in that instance, unless I'm mistaken, it's not that the friends have reserved the meeting room and are extending into the public spaces. The friends are using the public space for reasons to benefit the library. And I, I see a distinction there.
Yeah, I do too.
Patrick, would you please distribute the meeting room policy to everyone just to make sure? So that, you know, the rest of us can take a look at it and if we have.
I think it's easy to assume that something that's happening in the entryway to the library is condoned by the library or affiliated by the library. Or is something that's like sort of within a separate room, I would assume like, oh, like, you know, anything can happen in there. And so I, you know, I just, I'm just wondering, like, I don't know how to thread that needle, but it seems that, you know, the friends, it does have a particular relationship.
Yeah, the friends are a bad example. They're not a good example.
Seems like it deals with the, the confines.
Right. I think we need to, the question is really is about, um, it was not just about this, but like when you put stuff in the hall, are you blocking egress? To have a bunch of people clogging up the hall, standing there. But again, most of the time when this has happened in the past, it's just been with much smaller meetings. It, it is natural to, in some instances, from an event perspective, to have like a table out there so that people can like conduct whatever conversation in business. Oh, you wanna buy the book? Use the book and not have it going on in the room. I, I, you know, I understand why that might be beneficial, but it may, again, by making too many exceptions or having an exception here but not there, it, it can get messy. So we may just want to say, you can't set up, you can't set up camp out in the hall.
Yeah. I mean, I could see the group that I could see running into this, um, might be like Girl Scouts selling cookies, like, um, but, I mean, I think if we're gonna have a policy, then there's gonna be a policy and they're just gonna have to reserve the room and have maybe a sign outside this door saying, come in and buy Girl Scout cookies.
I'm wondering about signage. Like maybe there's a way that the library can provide like kind of a standard sign that you can use so that your people know to turn left at the door, um, but that anything that actually happens with it, yeah. But if there is sort of a, you know, a sort of empty sign that someone can put their little.
Did you feel on Saturday that they needed some sort of guidance? Or, you know, like in terms of, you know, not spilling over into the, the library itself?
You know, kind of like hurting, hurrying.
Well, part of the problem was the one woman who approached the desk to ask if there were more chairs. I said to her, how many people do you have? And she said, well, about a hundred and twenty. And after we had that conversation, I saw a number more people come in. There were people standing at the back. There were people standing out there trying to get in. I don't know, there may well have been, but I don't know if there were people standing in that hallway there listening because they were unable to get into the room. And the content of, of this meeting is really irrelevant. It was, it was the size of the gathering that was a problem.
Well, and that the organizers were not trying to, to deal with, you know, I mean, organizers have an event and more people come than, than they're allowed to have, then it's the organizer's responsibility to turn people away.
Well, she said she was going to do that, but then she didn't.
Yeah.
Right. And there was, there was also, I, I'm, you know, I'm going to very generously, um, take it as a given that they were telling us the truth. But they, there, there was some conversation or comments made that there was confusion on the part of the, of the organizers of the event because of the signage outside on, on the wall. So again, you know, I didn't talk to every organizer, maybe there were more than one and, and different people had a different idea about that. Um, but again, that's where the, where the policy form comes into play. And it's like you have read and understand the policy and understand that it's a hundred and not two fifty. In the meantime, we, we are gonna like review why that two fifty exists and whether that signage is required or if it can be removed or altered, uh, to reflect reality.
And I think to say also in that document that, um, the library, um, can provide ninety four chairs. Um, and that is all that aren't available. We just don't have the resources there. So now, before you go into this, that, that's all the seating.
But even still, you run into the problem of people standing around the edge. And you run into the problem, and you know, what occurred to me as when I came, I was parked down three parking places up from the senior center. And I said, what if the senior center were open?
Were having their own event.
Exactly.
Well, during construction, we, you know, in the planning for this, we always had those conversations with the, the Council on Aging about like, well, what if, what if? Uh, and it was always, we always agreed that with good communication, we would avoid those kinds of situations. And thankfully this was a Saturday. Um, I never even, it never even occurred to me to contact Haley. I mean, I, thankfully they were closed, but it just never dawned on me that I should probably like think about that. Um, but yeah, any other day.
Well, how are you to know? Like there could be an event that they think is gonna be twenty five people, ends up being a hundred and you don't know that in advance to coordinate that with the Council on Aging, so.
That's also a thing. Yeah, definitely. Right. But you, yeah, sometimes you just have an inkling. And I think the form should reflect, um, you know, someone's best guess estimate as to how many people they expect to attend such a gathering. If they're expecting like, yeah, we're really hoping that it's gonna be at capacity, then capacity is whatever we set it up. And they should tell us that and not, you know, say thirty. Why would they say thirty if they think it's gonna be eighty? But, um, but that, that should be on the form that they give us the best guess.
Well, I think, you know, once we are able to do an online request
Yeah.
for a reservation, you know, there will be fields for who is the primary contact? How do we get ahold of them? This, that, and the other thing. You check the little box here. It means that you have read this policy, understood it, will abide by it, and failure to do so may jeopardize future reservations.
But if we're gonna say that the room capacity is one hundred people, then do we really need to ask you how many you're expecting? Because we're telling you upfront, you can't exceed this. I don't care.
Well, because, again, right, but again, a hundred, a hundred person meeting, just the practical ramifications of that is a hundred, we don't, there's not a hundred parking spaces on this site. So we need, we kind of need to know that.
So then maybe we need to bump it down.
Yeah, yeah. That's a factor that we need to consider.
So that's what I'm saying. So then if whatever that number is, I mean, if we're saying you cannot have more than X number, then do we really need to ask them how many they expect? Because they're already reading that it's not going to be.
Right. But it's, again, it's still important to know if that group had come in here and said, we wanna meet. Um, and they had said, we don't really expect more than fifteen people because this is like an organizing meeting or whatever. That would be a very different consideration than the meeting that happened, even though it was a violation. But even if they had stopped to it and they only put a hundred people in this room, that's still a, something that we would like to know ahead of time. Because if they do this on a Wednesday, when the Council on Aging is open, I don't want to have to guess and be like, well, I didn't ask. You know, because they're gonna be mad. So we should, we should at least try to get a heads up. We can't control situations. Sometimes the organizers can't control situations or have a crystal ball. But if we get a sense that something's gonna be a big deal, we should be as prepared as possible. I just think there's no harm in asking a question.
And there may be, you know, it, it may be, like you alluded to earlier, like maybe at a certain capacity, there are additional fees in terms of custodial services.
Right.
And, you know, so it may, it, it may be that there's a cer, there's like two tiers. Like there's like the maximum capacity tier, which does, which.
Two to what? Yeah.
Yeah, which, which just has an impact fee basically. I don't know.
Yeah, this is all.
And that becomes another thing to monitor.
But so that's what I was gonna bring up. Is it possible that maybe like a trustee should be here to help monitor it? Rather than like.
That becomes pretty, that becomes pretty onerous. I mean, it, it.
But that's, that's a lot of stress to put on the, the, your staff.
Yes, but again, that should come into, that should be in consideration as we just, as we discuss the maximum capacity for this room. Cause we have to like consider the wear and tear on people that work here as well. And, but we, you know, and it's, it is part of our mission. Carolyn, when we were just kind of talking informally outside was saying that she really hates to see us becoming like a banquet coordinator, which, you know, I get that. Again, if we want to restrict further, like what you can do in here as far as like serving food and that kind of thing, you know, we could do that. I, I just think that the room is part of, one of the selling points for how we got this building built. And the community, community deserves to use it in different ways, as long as they're acceptable. Don't do damage, don't cause disruption.
And, and if, sorry, go.
And I just don't want to, I, I personally do not want to police things to death. So that it's like you, well, and asking twenty questions about every event, I just want to make sure that they're consistent with the policy. And if you want to have little Timmy's birthday party here on Saturday, you know, knock yourselves out, just make sure it's cleaned up and everything else and it follows the policy and no open flames.
Cause if you think about it, th, this is probably the only space that's a community space in Heather.
Senior Center too.
It's not, that's not as available. It's, that's a little bit more locked down. It's, that's a little bit more locked down.
And it's specific to seniors. Okay.
Well, yes, but you've got public meetings in there now as well, but public health is in there and select beings are regularly in there.
Yeah, but I, I think that's because it's a formal meeting. It's not like Timmy's birthday party can be-
No, that, that's true.
That's a town building, a town business can happen in any town building that's, you know. But their, their building was not sold in that way. It was not sold in public health. It's going to have a multi-purpose meeting room that you will be able to reserve for your meeting or your event.
Well, and you would be having those meetings here if we had the, the correct-
Yeah. Right. Yeah. And that's another thing we need to take into consideration. We've gotten used to the way things are that, that, um, these meetings take place during our normal staffed open hours, but we need to think about what happens when there's access to the building. Do we really want a hundred people attended meetings happening here at eight o'clock at night?
And then like the staff that come in in the morning to find whatever gets left behind.
Right. Exactly. There are a lot of considerations, a lot of things that we need to figure out that are not just for now, but how it works in the future or maybe, you know, again, limitations based on the time of day, what kind of meeting it is, and, you know.
It's probably not going to be simple.
No, probably not.
And you probably, I got a little bit of pushback.
On what?
From whom?
The change in policy.
From who, though?
Well, I mean, if, if the people that came here last Saturday come here again.
Well, they, they can abide by the policy.
I'm not concerned about that. A policy is a policy and if I have to say to somebody like, wow, the, you know, the way overcapacity of your past meeting caused us to reconsider our policy? I mean, I'm happy to tell them that, but that's essentially where the position they put us in-
Yeah.
-by not policing their own capacity in town minutes and turning people away. They said they had a waiting list and then they promptly ignored the waiting list and just let everybody in. So, you know, that's not a hard conversation to have.
Anyway, so if everybody has a chance to look at the meeting room policy and if things strike you as items that you want to be sure are talked about, thought about, incorporated or changed, please let Susan know.
Or should we bring that to our next meeting? Like-
Well, let's, if you have ideas, send them to Susan now.
Which is, we don't wanna put all, as many thoughts in the pot as, as possible so that we start thinking about them.
Cause the next meeting is before our meeting.
Okay. Just send them directly and then it's not a discussion, it's just, okay.
And then just put together a recommendation, we'll look it over and discuss it, but hopefully most of the work is done and, you know, it doesn't take up hours of this group's time.
Well, is that something that requires like us to meet prior to that?
That's not gonna happen. I mean, right now, I mean, we'll just ask them, we will suggest to them that they must abide by the policy.
Oh, you're talking about the, the group that meets, that must be-
Yeah, the folks who are here.
Yeah. When I talk to them next, I'm just gonna let them know that they were not invited, that they were in violation of the policy and that if it happened again, they would jeopardize their ability to use the space in the future, that they need to stick by the policy. Capacity is a hundred, I can explain it again and, you know, just let them know that's where it stands.
Yeah.
And see, just to them, there's hotels you can rent, basement facilities.
Yes!
Exactly. I will say, I will say, interestingly-
What about this town businesses?
We did get a lot of phone calls from people who were, if not incensed, then, you know, really curious about why we had not, why we don't list events like this on the library's website. Cause we had people calling and saying, I'm looking for information about this event that's happening on Saturday. Um, and as, as one of you said, I think you said that you, you know, sometimes you assume that it's somehow affiliated with the library and we just have, I've been telling the staff, like just be like, we know nothing about the event, it's not anything to do with the library, it's not affiliated with the library.
It's the group's job to advertise it, it's not the library's.
Right. Right. So people calling us and saying, well, what's the website? What's this? And we're like, we don't know. You know, it has nothing to do with us, other than that they're using the space.
I mean, eventually I can see a calendar that blocks, just blocks out time because it is reserved for a private function.
Right. But it's not gonna be a promotion tool.
But it's, no. And it's not necessarily going to say, identify who is using it. It's simply-
Reserved, by reserve.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.